Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 31st, 2017 Selectman's Meeting. A little after 6:30, we're gonna go into Executive Session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with union personnel. Foxborough Professional Firefighters Association, Local 2252, United Steel Workers, A and B, AFL-CIO. Board of Selectmen approve Executive Session Minutes of 10:17. Doc, can I have a motion?
Move to, move into Executive Session?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All is in favor? Hi.
Mark, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
David, yes? Welcome back, everybody. Sorry, we're running a little behind. We just adjourned from Executive Session. Like I said earlier, today's Tuesday, October 31st, Board of Selectmen's Meeting, and really the start of a new era in our new Selectmen's Meeting Room at our new Town Hall. So it's gonna be a evening of firsts. I'll read the agenda. 7 o'clock, Citizens Input, 7:05, Police Chief Bill Baker, Public Nuisance Bylaw, Discuss Vote, Public Nuisance Bylaw. 7:15, Raptor Restaurant Group, LLC, DBA, Mo's Southwest Grill, Approval of a Common Vic License, 'cause I can't say that word, and a Seven-Day Entertainment License. 7:25, Liquor Regulation Working Group, Discuss Proposed Liquor Regulations. 7:35, Housing Authority, Discuss Walnut Street Project. 7:50, Bill Keegan Jr., Special Town Meeting Articles. 8:35, Board of Selectmen, Sign, Special Town Meeting Warrant. 8:45, Selectmen's Update. 8:55, Town Manager's Update. 9:05, Assistant Town Manager's Update, and then we have a bunch of action items. Bill Casparra, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Being the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. 7:30, so we are behind. Is there anybody here for Citizens Input? Anybody? No?
The Chairman, just, I know that Chief Hatfield's here, and Chief Hatfield is our Emergency Operations Director, as we all know, and just probably fitting to at least give a brief update of what happened during the past storm, to give people, the community, an update on that. First of all, we are 100% back up, at least to our knowledge, in terms of electricity. Turns out that that electricity outage was based upon the fact that we had some outages that occurred any time after 11 o'clock on Sunday night into the early morning hours of Monday morning. The first repairs did not really start till about noon time on Monday, because they first had to wait for the storm to pass, and then they had to do an evaluation, and then determine where the outages were occurring, and so the actual repair started around noon time. We were notified this morning at around 10 o'clock that the town was back up and running. So for all intents and purposes, we were out for about 22 hours, give or take a few hours, depending upon where folks were. I have to tell you, I consider that to be a very significant, a very successful response by National Grid. They were very cooperative to us throughout the entire process. They were in constant contact with the chief, the chief was in constant contact with me. I spoke with National Grid representatives throughout the storm, and they were very responsive to us, unlike some folks who are still without power this evening. They were very responsive to Foxborough, and I want to thank the dispatches, the public safety personnel, DPW personnel, all the office personnel, who had to deal with a lot of troubling phone calls from folks, and I'll speak about that in a minute, but who really stood up and did everything they could to try and help folks during that difficult situation. But fortunately, it was less than about a 24-hour period, and I think the chief did a terrific job of managing all of that and keeping us well informed. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief and just say, give us a brief update.
That was a great report.
I was gonna say, did he leave you anything?
That was perfect, really, and honestly, I can't say enough about National Grid. They really worked with us really well on the storm. It was different than the Union Loop. It wasn't the Union Loop in this situation. And so, you know, they took our concerns very serious when we talked about our seniors and making sure our senior housing got up and running before dark. By 4:30, they were up and running, and then really worked on our schools. So Town Manager did a great report, and I can't say enough about the dispatchers and everybody, you know, all the public safety, police, and fire, and everybody working together. We had a lot of debris, a lot of branches, a lot of debris, and you would have known it by today, so.
And just one comment about civil discourse that I think I have to mention, because I think it's, it was yesterday, I actually witnessed it myself, that people were really angry and violent towards some of our members of staff. And it's really uncalled for, because our folks did nothing but try and be helpful yesterday, and I understand people get frustrated, and we end up being in the brunt of that many times, but it's really uncalled for, and I think folks, I wish people would take that into consideration, because there's human beings on the other side of their phone, and there's human beings that sit in this office. And by and large, I have to tell you, the chief was one of the last people to be turned on last night, so it wasn't like he wasn't in the same boat as everybody else was. So I have to tell you that, I hope that, and my message to folks tonight is that, look, we are here to help you in any way, shape, or form. We don't control National Grid, that's the ultimate story, but we do everything we can to work with them, because ultimately, they work with us. And we did that yesterday in the best way we possibly could, and we tried to be as extremely responsive to folks as we could. My only request and plea to folks is that, please be mindful of the fact that we're here to help you, and please don't take it out on the staff, because those folks there are trying to be as equally as helpful.
Phil, can I just ask, through the Chair, a question? The frustration and the anger that you saw?
Yeah.
I mean, it was a big storm. People assume there's gonna be, trees come down in the lines. At what point, when they got frustrated, was it not about the electricity was out, was it about lack of information, or National Grid not answering their phones or their website? There's frustration, not because it went out, I think it's frustration because information, or they didn't know when it was gonna get back?
Well, see, that's part of the problem, is the fact that we live in a society today that everybody has become so attached to electronics, and having instantaneous information and access to information, that when they don't get it, they get really frustrated. And I get that, I understand that. We try to put stuff out, the problem is that we didn't have always access, I mean, cable systems were down, and we had electricity down, so people weren't always getting that message. I was able to finally put something out around 4:30 yesterday afternoon, saying that we are working on it, it should be up and running by tonight, and that was the best we could do under the circumstances. People did call National Grid, they were able to get through into National Grid, they take their information, and they put it into their system, and they try to be responsive. I think the frustration grows the more the system is out. If you go back in time, 15, 10, 15 years ago, it was not unusual to be out three, four, five days, right? It happened here in this town, if people were out for a week, two weeks in some cases. This was less than 24 hours. So I think we need to keep that in perspective, that we live in a society today that wants everything instantaneously addressed. Unfortunately, we're not always able to do that. We do the best we can under the circumstances, and we try to put out as much information as possible that was accurate. We don't wanna put out inaccurate information, because that only makes it worse. So that was, in a nutshell, that's where it was.
And just very quickly, as you are aware, Selectmen DeValas, we do use social media quite a bit, so we were trying to make sure we had the same message out with Mike Webber, Webb, and with the cable, doing social media there, police, fire, and also here, to try to make sure the message was the same, talking about where to go if they needed to charge their batteries for their cellphone, medical equipment. We actually utilized this room, along with the McGinty Room at the Public Safety Building. And so, as we've done in the past, we try to use the social media to get the message out, but it was a very quick, once they got everything rolling, it was a very quick process of getting us back up and running.
And so, for the public's information and future considerations, this building is completely on generator, so we were fully operational all day yesterday, and the generator went off at 4:30 yesterday afternoon when the power went back up. So if anyone does need assistance during a storm like that, this is a stop that people can come in and get their charges phoned, or their phones charged, rather, they can go to the Public Safety Building, or any of the, and those two are the main sites that we use during those storms, unless we declare a shelter, but we wouldn't do a shelter in a situation like that. Yesterday, the conditions, weather conditions were such that it wasn't really dangerous in any way, shape, or form, so we took, we used a measured response under a measured condition, and it worked, even though I know that some folks were somewhat frustrated by it. And look, we share in the frustration, because many of us were in the same boat, sharing that same level of frustration. When it happens, we all like to have instant access to information. Not always possible.
Question, Roger.
Yeah.
After a situation like this, do you guys do an after-action review?
I usually have a conversation with National Grid, both our liaison, we no longer have Tom Coughlin, we have a young lady that lives here by the name of Sue, and I apologize, I don't remember her last name.
She lives in Foxborough, so.
And she actually lives here in Foxborough and is our new liaison, and we were on the phone constantly yesterday. And what we'll do, like I've done in the past with National Grid, is we'll sit down and discuss, A, did any of our high hazards change, any of our concerns changed, and how could we improve? It went smooth as clockwork in regards to they taking what I was saying, and what they were giving me for information, was matching up with what I was finding out in the field, and it worked out perfectly.
I'm talking like an internal AAR.
We have our department head meetings. I was working very closely with Chris Gallagher, because Roger's on vacation, and Chief Baker, the Town Manager, Vicki Lowe, we had all our dialogues, everything that we normally did. The only thing that we didn't do on this one, because we were getting good feedback that they felt they could get us up and running faster, was setting up the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. And I think that it followed the normal model that we always do.
I'm not overly talking about, like, during the situation.
I know, after.
In fact, I'm hearing all sorts of complaints and all that. I, for one, until I reached out to Bill, I never even was updated on anything, until I reached out, I don't know, noon, 1:00 o'clock on Monday, and said, hey, by the way, what's going on with the power outages? So hearing like what Jim said, seems like there's a lot of disconnect somewhere, so maybe a...
Well, I would not, I would not call it disconnect. What happened in this case, Chris, I want to be very clear about this, National Grid did not give us an indication of when they were gonna start repairing things until afternoon time. So we did not want to provide false information to folks before that.
Yeah, that's...
So we followed the, and the main thing that we hoped was gonna come back online was that the Naposet Street Substation went down, and it caused 2/3 of the outages to occur here in town. That feed came from Rantham. There was a problem in the Rantham feed into the substation, that's what caused the problem. It didn't actually occur here in Foxborough. So they had the system up and running for about 45 minutes, then it went back down again. They realized it was the feed that was bad coming into Foxborough. We'd hoped that we'd actually been up a lot sooner than we were, based on that situation.
And I understand what you're saying. Communications is the key. And if we can improve it, we will absolutely do that. I feel that, at this point, I was doing briefings probably every hour, hour and a half, to both the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager. I kind of left it for that to be disseminated to you folks, and I apologize if we need to, we can do a better job.
We can do that more often.
And also, I'm saying too, is like, if everything happened, we should have a, I don't know if you wanna do a public one or a private AAR on what went good, what went bad, what can we improve on?
Absolutely.
There's always room for improvement.
Have no problem with that.
We usually do a debriefing session, and we'll do that probably this week, following, once everything's up and everybody's back and operational.
One more question, not to belabor it, but it seems, and if you're living in Foxborough, if you got a business in Foxborough, over the years, it's Foxborough. Like, I'm on the Walpole Line, I went a mile, and I had electricity, and could get gas in Walpole. Mansfield has their own plant. Why, once again, is it Foxborough? That seems to get more, and it's not a Town Hall issue, and it's not sharing of information, it's a National Grid. Why is Foxborough, in my opinion, over the years, the one that gets hit? Electricity coming from Plainville hit that side of town, and Foxborough, they were served. But if it's not the Union Loop this time?
Right.
Why Foxborough, from your experience?
I'm gonna be honest with you, it caught me completely off-guard. Both of that, the both major hits were on Route 1 coming out of Rantham, and then the feed that goes to the Naposet Substation was also coming out of Rantham. We never have had, in the nine years I've been here, the issues with that line. We'll follow up with them to find out why it was that line versus we're so used to the Union Loop being our issue, and that wasn't the issue this time. We don't normally have the Naposet Street Substation go down. It's also brand spanking new, so if there was any other substation, I would have probably thought it would have been that before that one. And act of God, I don't know, but we will follow up on it.
Because, I mean, it's October, so we've got November, December, January, February, that, this is the beginning again of another year.
Last few years have actually been pretty good, and I think they've spent a lot of money upgrading the system and doing a lot of tree trimming, a lot of tree trimming, to the point where we didn't really think that most of the branches that fell off the trees were causing the outage this time. It was a major, it was like, I wanna say 2/3 of the outages were attributed to the Naposet Valley Station not being fed. So that, it was sometimes, that's, sometimes I guess that's an element of luck, if you will, but that was unfortunate.
The wind was stronger than I've ever seen here. I mean, we had basically a half a dozen houses that had tree damage, nothing severe, minor damage to their homes, but we had tree damages to residential homes. There was a lot of debris on the roads, signs that got blown over, and a lot of tree branches that were on the primaries. The winds were higher than, you know, I've ever seen in a long time here, so the factors were much different than what we've seen in the past.
Well, I will tell you, this wasn't an isolated storm, it was across the state. I had 10 facilities that were on generator, I still have two facilities out in Western Mass that are still on generator, so.
Well over 300,000 in Massachusetts alone.
Maine has had the worst outage ever, 400,000 customers. So it was a significant storm, but I'm just grateful for the fact that we were up so, back so quickly compared to other places that were, hits hit us hard. 400,000 customers were in Maine.
We'll have a briefing, we'll follow up on some of the communications, and making sure that we can have that better in the future.
Great.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay. Lieutenant Noonan, I'm assuming you're standing in for Chief, Chief Baker? Discuss Vote, Public Nuisance Bylaw.
Good evening. The Chief Baker, several months ago, requested that the town look at a additional bylaw that would give the Police Department a tool to be able to deal with situations where there is pervasive criminal activity on a premise over a period of time. And it would do more than just make the individual who's responsible for the activity liable, but it would also make the owner of the premise liable as well. So we formed a committee, consisted of Chief Baker, myself, Town Clerk, and the Health Director, and we looked at some model public nuisance bylaws, and we also worked with Town Council on it, to put together what we thought would be a fair, but have clarity to it, a bylaw that would be able to give the Police Department a tool for enforcement on premise and owners. So I think Lieutenant Noonan probably could speak more directly to the effect that it would have, and the benefit that it would give the Police Department.
Thank you. The, obviously, we have criminal statutes where we can follow, disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, but you can't always arrest yourself out of situations. By having this bylaw in place, it puts the responsibility back on the property owners, whether it be a private establishment or an absentee landlord. If you have a situation that's continually happening at one location, and you're dealing with those individuals, there's no effect on the residents, therefore, the neighborhood has to suffer, whether it be in an apartment building, or in the neighborhood, or a street, or a complex. By having, not only addressing the issue with the people that are responsible for their actions, but the landlord themselves, gives us another tool to address the issue on a bigger scale. Obviously, based on the bylaw, you get three bites of the apple before there's a civil infraction. You get two notices of a warning, the first notice of a warning goes to the parties that are involved, and the property owner. Second time we respond, and there's an incident that falls under this statute, the property owner and those involved get another notice of a warning. The third time, we show up and have to deal with the same situation, or the same parties, or the same address, then the civil infraction comes in place. By having this tool gives us options to try to remedy the situations on a civil, a non-criminal matter, and hold the landlords responsible for their attendant's actions.
It was reviewed by Town Council as well, and there were some minor changes done to it to add clarity, but Town Council was in agreement that it, the way it was written would be, would meet the intent that the Police Department was looking for.
Questions?
Just so you can, or I can relate to it a little bit better, so there's a criminal activity, there's a civil activity?
There's a criminal action, we could take criminal.
Separate.
Correct.
So can you give an example of, was there a catalyst for this, or have you been banging your head against the wall because this keeps happening, so we're going in this direction? Like, what are some of the circumstances that you're talking about? Junk cars parked there versus...
No, I would, without referring to any specific case, there have been situations that, for example, that occur at some of the motels in town, where you have repeated offenses by a, an individual that is renting a space, and they may be there for a while, not just transient nature, but they stay for a while. That would be a perfect example, where now you're putting the owner of the motel on notice, that they are liable for that individual's criminal actions. There's one example. I can't give specifics.
Yeah, I'm not looking for specifics, but if...
But there's an example of how it would be used.
Thank you.
Bill, can you describe, in the article, the bullet point that says premises? So the way I'm reading it is if, in a nice residential neighborhood, all the homes are nice and well-maintained, and then you have one that they haven't cut the grass in 12 years, and this tree's fallen, is that...
No, that does not, that would not apply. That's not defined here as a public nuisance.
So, says here, premises, any resident or other private property, place or location, including any commercial or business property. So are we talking just criminal type of activity?
Basically.
More like a disturbing activity, such as continual loud music, continual parties, fighting, a high presence of drugs or alcohol, where the police are constantly responding, or constantly getting the noise complaints, and to resolve the issue with the neighbors, and to try and bring peace and tranquility, peace and tranquility back to that location, have the civil infraction for the people that are involved, as well as the property owners.
Okay.
It's mainly the nuisance, public nuisance, in regards to peace and tranquility of the community.
Okay.
So as it stands today, you have no recourse, or limited recourse?
Not through a town bylaw.
Without this bylaw in place, you have limited recourse?
Correct. The only thing we could rely upon is criminal arrests for, or summons for disorderly conduct or disturbing the peace.
You have questions?
It's pretty straightforward.
Bill, is our action here tonight, just to agree to carry this forward, as Article 11?
I know, the Board had asked that you wanted to get information on the articles, and so we've been providing that to you right along.
We don't have to take any action.
There's no action tonight, no. At some point, you're gonna, tonight, later on in the night, you're gonna actually move the, sign the warrant. We do have a couple of changes to it, it's a couple of articles that are not gonna be going forward, but at that point, you'll make your, you'll approve this, and you'll agree to send it forward if you so choose to do so.
Will you be presenting this tomorrow with the advisory committee?
I will, yes.
Any more questions?
No. Hopefully, this isn't the last time you get to see Bill before you, by the way. I promise you, thank God. We'll open, that's the case.
No, we might find something.
All right, we'll find a reason to get you in here, don't worry.
We'll come up with something.
I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Charge him with some sort of a violation.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Raptor Restaurant Group, LLC, DBA, Mo's Southwest Grill, Approval of a Common Vic License and a Seven-Day Entertainment License.
You wanna come forward, please? Can you just sit at my table? Okay, thank you.
Good. Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Jerry Blau, I'm the Director of Operations.
Michelle May Cumber, Multi-Unit Operator, Manager.
Welcome.
We like to say thank you. We were only out for 60 minutes yesterday.
Oh, no kidding.
And we got to open, so we appreciate that.
You're on the good end of that deal.
I'm in the dark, thank you. Have fun.
That's good. Thank you.
Is this the new location at Forbes Crossing?
Correct, correct. And we're waiting on National Grid.
Do you run the one up at Foxborough?
Patriot Place.
At Patriot Place as well?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so.
Okay, so this establishment would be consistent with what you're doing up at Patriot Place?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same franchise.
It's kinda interesting, we have the two, we have two in one location, two in the same town, is that something that you normally do, or...
I think part of it is the uniqueness of Patriot Place, and that's more of a destination location, where we're really looking forward to this other location because of the Office Park across the street, and all the hotels in the area. So we actually built a second line in the store to deal with all the catering and online orders that we're gonna be getting. So we're kinda excited about that.
Unless you're on the Mansfield line, too, so it's right on the line.
Yeah, you could literally walk out and throw a stone, and you're in Mansfield.
Okay. Question, maybe Bill could answer this. So if we have a restaurant currently in town that has the common victual license and an entertainment license, is there any, can that entertainment license be used in two locations in town?
No, it has to be used in that location, site-specific.
So are they allowed to have two entertainment licenses at two separate kinds by law? Okay, that was my only question. Not that I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted to make sure that...
I think because we have TVs.
Yeah.
Do you have an occupancy date, tentative occupancy?
We are looking at November 30th. Again, we are waiting on National Grid.
For permanent power?
They were supposed to put the power in yesterday, but obviously, events stopped that. We think that it's gonna happen any day, and, you know, we can't get cable, we can't put the registers in, we can't do a lot of things without permanent power, and they've pulled up temporary power.
So other than that, the build-out is just about complete?
I would say we're about 85% done.
I spoke with another tenant yesterday, they're looking at mid-November to move it, so.
Have you done your hiring? Are you all set for hiring?
We're trying very, very hard. We've run radio commercials, we've run newspaper ads, we're on every social site we can be on. We actually think that once we get the permanent power, and we could put a banner outside, and we could actually hire there, it's a much easier location to get to. Right now, when you do, when you talk about Patriot Place, it's kinda by appointment, because you're working around events.
Any other questions from the Board? No.
Yeah, move to approve, Raptor Restaurant Group, LLC, doing business as Mo's Southwest Grill, for a common victualer's license, and a seven-day entertainment license.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor? All those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
All right. Best of luck.
Anything you need, let us know, too.
Power. You got power?
I wish, trust me. Thank you very much.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Discuss proposed liquor regulations with the Liquor Regulation Working Group. So, this was a continuation from our last meeting. I think the only concern we had was in the language on what constituted shall, shall versus may.
Yes, and we heard from Chief Baker, and he was fine with the original shall, and I talked to Rich Noonan, and he was fine with, his suggestion was may, may, the word may, and he was fine with shall. So, I think that's been put to bed.
So, the, the board had asked for a clean version, without the edits and track changes in it, so that's what you have before you, and the change is, shall was an edit, and then may was an edit to the edit, we went back to the shall edit.
Yeah, I, I read through this over the weekend. Any other comments?
I'm fine with it.
So, in order, and it would be in order for the board to, to make a motion to approve the regulations as presented?
Move to approve the regulations as presented. The regulation, I think.
What regulation?
For holders of alcohol beverage licenses. Sorry. I was just copying Bill.
He's making it hot on him, I was like, I'm sorry.
He'll lead you down a dead-end street.
I will, I will second that.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Jenny.
Thanks for all, all your efforts.
Rain's here, and Dave Brown was the other person on the working group, plus Chief Baker and Lieutenant Noonan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we got the, discuss the Walnut Street project with the Housing Authority.
No, nobody there.
So, this particular item is not really formally before you at this point, because this was a follow-up conversation. We had a conversation with the Housing Authority last time, because there was, there was some uncertainty, because this is actually proposed as an article for town meeting. But further research is, has determined that, based upon the actual bylaw itself, is that the, the, the action is, is properly before the, the Housing Trust, as opposed to Board of Selectmen and town meeting. So, there's no further action required by the board or town meeting at this time. So, I'm gonna suggest to you that that article should be removed from consideration, from the warrant for special town meeting, as well. The bylaw itself actually refers to the, the trust is having the authority to approve the funding, so.
So, they don't have to go to any town meeting?
No. They were, they were given the authority in the bylaw that was approved by town meeting, so they, they have, they already have the authority.
So, they were in front of us last time, in error, because they didn't need to have our permission to allocate the funds?
Yeah, allocate the funds. They, they thought that they, they was, it was the impression, mistaken impression that we all had, was that the, that the funding had to go before the, the town meeting for appropriation, but actually, the appropriate, the money actually is under their, their control. The, the money's already been, on the, it's already in, in a special fund, and there's no appropriation requested. So, that's, that's the purpose of the, that was the reason why it was on the warrant, that it had to be approved by town meeting, but it doesn't, it does not.
Bill, I'm the Selectman representative on the housing, sorry, housing group. If we, if the members vote on the, the money issue, do I have to take my cue, do we have to, does the Board of Selectmen have to take a position on this, so that I can bring that position to the-
You're, you're acting as a member of that trust, at this point, so you, you can, you can certainly, you know, take up your, your position with the board prior to the meeting, but ultimately, it's your decision, as, as a member of the trust.
Okay. Well, do you gentlemen want to have more participation, and tell, you know, give me a direction in regard to my vote? No, I'll do whatever.
Well, I mean, you're the representative at the meeting.
Okay, all right, well, I just don't want to-
It's, it's, the, the question is, is, is a valid question. I mean, if, if anybody has any particular concerns that they want to have raised, certainly, Jenny, as your representative, can, can raise those back to the, to the Housing Trust.
The biggest one is, is the, the light and the, the whole traffic situation.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's something I've brought up at, at the meetings, you know.
Have they already voted to? Go ahead.
No, because we didn't know, there was a question whether the Selectmen had to approve it, or town meeting had to approve it. John Mitchmore wasn't quite sure about that. Well, now it turns out, this is the third option.
Right.
When did we find out this?
Actually, later this afternoon, believe it or not, so.
And I found out, just I happened to call Bill about something else, and I went, oh, by the way.
So, when's your next meeting?
I, I don't know. They haven't settled.
They haven't set a meeting until I know of.
So, so how does the money get into the fund? I'm going back to, at the last meeting, looking back at the action that we took, and town meeting took, to put money into the fund. That's all mitigation money.
Yeah, that was mitigation, that was mitigation from money that came from a developer, from, I guess that was down at, at Chestnut Green.
Right.
So, that money went into, was created, you created a trust, and then it was a, they were concerned about a sunset provision on the trust, and then that got resolved, that was actually extended at the last town meeting. So, it's, the trust has more or less control of that, through, there's a bylaw that, that you actually have, that allows for the control of that.
So, it would be land that would be donated, right now in concept, from the state to the town?
To, to the Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority.
To the Housing Authority.
The money comes through a vehicle through town, but it's mitigation money, and, and there's also other money that comes in there, other than that, right?
Yeah, conceivably, you'd get more money from the state to help develop the property from Housing Authority, through the Housing Authority. That would be the vehicle for which it would come. And then, this money would be used as, as support, as a support mechanism for developing the site.
So, if the Selectmen don't have a say in it, and town meeting doesn't have a say, it's all up to the Housing Authority to spend the Housing Trust money and bring a project-
Well, no, the Housing, Housing Authority has to petition the, the Housing Trust Committee for the funds, and the, and the committee has to actually approve it. So, it's still their, their control. And that's made, and that trust is made up of, of a cross-section of, of membership from across the town.
Right.
So, it's, you have Planning Board, Housing Authority, not Housing Authority, but Selectmen-
Yeah, Planning Board, I mean, and that was one of the issues that came up. There's $385,000, I think, something like that, in the fund, and the concern was, well, wait a minute, we're not gonna use all of that money for this one project, because there are other housing-
Housing needs.
Needs.
Correct.
And, so, but this, the money that they're asking for is just to start the process of, of developing that land, and then it will be developed by private, it will be privately developed.
Of investors.
And, you know, but they need, they need something to say, okay, we, we want this, we want to start the ball rolling, and, so that was the request for the money.
All right.
So, I want to put that on before you dealt with the, the special town meeting issue, so I purposely put that there, so. So, there's no action effectively for the, before the board on that, right there, so there was more informational in that regard.
So, what's the vehicle if people are concerned, or want to have input into this, if it's not these public hearing meetings?
They can go to the Housing Trust meeting.
And when, when do they meet, and how often?
Um, we've met a couple of times throughout the year.
Well, I've only been to, to one meeting, but they have, there's been a delay in the process, so they haven't really met for a while. Then they had two, two meetings, I went to one of them. So, I don't know when the next one is, is scheduled.
But it'll be posted here, publicly.
Last time I went on the website to try to find meeting minutes, or any feedback from what was going on, and there was no meeting minutes posted I could see from the past. But what I'm concerned about, obviously, and I stated last time, is that intersection. So, this is a way to, it's not even circumventing the board, if it never should have been in front of us.
Yeah.
Fine. But having that intersection addressed.
Yeah, so, so from what I understand, they're looking for seed money, to see if it's a viable project number.
Correct.
Right.
They still have to go through Planning Board, Site Plan Approval.
Correct.
Provide the traffic studies.
Yeah.
They're still gonna have to do all that.
Yeah, and that's, that was the proper forms, Jim, that those issues will get raised.
Right.
But there's still a lot of process before them on this.
Yeah, and Gordon Green from the Planning Board is on the committee, and Paige Duncan is also on the committee.
Right. And Paige is, sort of serves as the staff of the Housing Trust as well. So, she's fully aware that that intersection has to be addressed.
That was, that was the, I think that was the number one concern, that everyone, everyone had a story, you know.
Didn't we think the, that state report was supposed to come out sometime soon, too?
I saw-
With the report, yeah, it hasn't, the preliminary indication is that they're gonna recommend, recommend a light there.
I saw a message from Representative Barrows to the people of Mansfield, on his Facebook site, announcing a 1:40 meeting for the Mansfield people, on the study, and that meetings would be coming for Foxborough at a later date.
Yeah, he's, he'll give us one as well.
So, the reports are gonna be starting.
Okay.
We don't have a date yet.
But there's no, it's not imminent at this point, so, you know, but we, but the good news about that, that report will probably be out before they, they go any further with that project.
Yeah, two weeks ago, you said it was in, due in about six weeks, so.
Yeah, exactly, so we're about, down to about four more, four more weeks.
So, if that report comes back and says, yeah, there should be a light at that intersection, who pays for it?
Well, that's something I'll have to deal with the developer on. They ultimately said they'd have to do it.
Say we were never gonna develop that property, say that wasn't even on the table.
Well, then, then, then we'd have to wait for the state to pay for that, because it's state highway, right there.
So, if they come back and say, yeah, it's a dangerous intersection, we need to put a light there, they put it on their list of things to do, and eventually, they'll get to it?
Yeah, it's, it's, since it's, it's all state highway layout, that would have to be their, their cost to deal with that.
But if-
The cost of the light would be borne, the way they were talking-
By the developer.
At the meeting, would, the cost of light would be borne by the developer.
Yeah, but I'm saying, what if that was, say they put 50 grand in, and they, they can't develop it, and it's never gonna be developed, who's gonna pay for the light?
So, Chris, Chris is theorizing that if it never got developed, and it came, the report comes out, and the recommendation is to put a light, a signalization at that intersection, who pays for it? Ultimately, it's the state, because it's state highway. In this particular instance, what I think that, what the Housing Authority advocates were saying, was that they'd like to do is, is see if they can roll it into development process, and see if the developer pays for a portion of it, if not all of it.
But also, with the medical building on Walnut Street, on the, on the other side, they were interested in kicking in some-
Yeah, maybe they'll participate.
Yeah, because they're concerned also.
So, at the last meeting, I picked up all the meeting minutes leading up to it. So, interestingly, our former town, town planner, Ms. Watson, sent a memo to the board, and this is what was the catalyst of the discussion back in 2015. And it says, Ms. Watson stated that they had, that they can't make a, make dispersments without a vote of the Board of Trustees, in the approval of the Board of Selectmen. They further said that they cannot enter into any long-term contracts without the consent of town meeting. They felt it was really important to have checks and balances, to make sure that was being done on behalf of the town, and that everyone's aware of it.
Yeah, so they're not, they're not entering into a contract, they're just providing funding to the Housing Authority. All right, so they, and they can't dis-
But they're look, but the money that they were looking, that they were getting allocated, was for professionals to do studies, and to find that, right?
Right, but they wouldn't be the, the ones that would hire them, that the Housing, the Housing Trust would not be, the Housing Authority would be. So, that's the point. So, if they, if they provide the funding, you'd have to go to the Housing Authority, would have to, you'd have to talk to the Housing Authority about who they would hire for the, for the study. And they've already hired someone, they already, they have a person in place that's, they're just looking for somebody to fund them, to do the work.
I'm sorry, so, so you're making a distinction between, and rightfully so, the municipal housing, Affordable Housing Trust-
Right.
-and the Housing Authority.
Correct.
So, you're saying the Housing Authority is doing this, not the trust?
Correct. They're only asking for the funding from, from, from the trust, to pay for it. So, there are several steps along the way, you know, I mean, I know that, the concern is that there's public input, and there'll be, there'll be plenty of that. I'm not concerned about that at all, I know, I know that will be, there'll be several steps to address that.
Can I get a question? Does the Housing Authority need permission of the Board of Selectmen to accept the money from the Housing Trust?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't think they do.
You know how we, you know how we approve money, you know, when-
Yeah. I don't, I don't think they do, because they're separately, they're, they're, well, it's like, they're a quasi-state agency. They're appointed primarily by the state, and they, we do have a couple elected, local elected officials that serve on it. So, they're somewhat independent.
They're not funded through the town?
No. Their funding all comes from the state.
Right. So, there's no, there's no budget appropriations?
Yeah, the, the local, the Board of Selectmen has very little authority over the, over the, of the Housing, Housing Authority.
No.
All right.
But I will, I will let you know when the next meeting is, and then, give a report, unless it, they're public meetings.
That's entirely your, your role, to do that, yeah, to keep the board informed of that.
It's, it's just, something seems odd to me. I'd want to go back and look at what was given to us when we voted this in, but it seems, two weeks ago, it's irritating that, two weeks ago, they made a presentation, and now they're saying, well, it's not enough authority to act on this, at all.
Well, no, I, I think they made, they made the presentation on behalf of the fact that they were asking, it was, it was a warrant article, okay, and the warrant article was looking for an appropriation. That's the reason they made the presentation to you. Okay? Then when it was discovered, that, that it really doesn't, doesn't require town meeting, actually, because-
Well, I, I think that, that's the discord, the-
The question, and why did it even-
Why did they think that?
To a warrant article.
Because that's what I thought, going through the whole-
Yeah.
-discussion that we had to bring this forward. So, at some point, they thought this was the right thing to do. Because I thought it was the right thing to do, based on Ms. Watson's memo and the presentation to us. So, I, I could be mistaken, but I, I thought all along, the money that came in would go into this trust, and it would be spent with the committee, but I thought it would have to go through town meeting or the Selectmen, not entirely by one group without, and, and let's face it, there's not a lot of public input at those meetings. The fact that you can't find it on the town website, or who's even on the committee, there's a discourse there. So.
Well, I think, I think the only, the only difference is that, anything that they do is still gonna be required to have public input. I, I, you know, I, I guess the thing is, is that, the, the difference in understanding is the fact that the Selectmen don't have authority over all, all appropriations, or the town meeting in this case. So, this is a case where the, the bylaw allows them to, to, you know, to disperse that, those funds, and that's the authority that they have, under the, under the bylaw, so. I mean, I guess it was just a misunderstanding in terms, and then, when we all looked at it closer, and then, you know, I spoke with John, and we reviewed it, it indicates that that, that's the authority. Doesn't require authority. I mean, I guess it was just a misunderstanding in terms, and then when we all looked at it closer, and then, you know, I spoke with John, and we reviewed it, it indicates that that, that's the authority. Doesn't require authority.
Bill, can you send out the language of that bylaw?
Sure.
To, to the board, so we can get our eyes on it again.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I, I have a question, you know, like, my question was, why did this get to the point where it became a warrant article? Who reviews the warrant articles, you know, the suggestion of warrant articles?
Well, they come in, they, they come in from all various boards, and then we, then we review them, when they ask for the, the, they ask for the, for it to go forward. Now, the question then becomes, and a lot of times we'll review them to see, to make sure the language is correct going forward. But this was a case where we all assumed that, that the request was appropriate, until, until we, we looked behind, behind the second layer, which was, really, there's no reason for it, because there's no authority for the town meeting to act here.
But was, was the warrant article init, uh, initially reviewed by town council? And i- if it had been, would town council have said, hey, who has the, who has the authority here?
I can't speak.
Is that what you're saying?
Was reviewed, yeah.
So the, the warrant articles that are reviewed, that are sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, are definitively done by town council. We sent the list to town council, and Housing Authority was one of the sponsors of it, so she weighed in on the language, but didn't comment on.
She may not have been aware of the bylaw.
Yeah, didn't comment on the bylaw.
So, so why was it put on today's agenda, then?
Oh, just to let you know that there's no further action, you, because you, you took no action on it the last time.
But it was put on the agenda to let us know that we have no action?
Yeah, there's no, no action.
So, in our packets, other than hearing it, not even from the chairman, from you, at the meeting, there's no information, there's no bylaw, there's no explanation, except to hear it at this meeting?
Well, the, the, the reason I put it down on was because you're dealing with a warrant tonight, and that action, that action is no longer needed.
But my point is, there's, every topic that comes in front of us, there should be some information, and not to be surprised at the meeting. It would have been a memo, or here's the attorney's, if Mitcham Moore's summary, or your summary, or something, that we can read before the meeting, that we can go back and look at what was discussed in 2015, that we can look at the general, the bylaw, who's on the committees, anything, other than hearing it for the first time at this meeting.
Well, as, as I said, I ended, I reviewed it this afternoon myself, and, because I was all ready to go on, and I called John, and I spoke to him about it. I spoke to John directly, about it, so.
But, but this was put on last week, the agenda's set last week.
Right, I understand, so I want, I wanted to be sure, they say, we're dealing, what are we dealing with here tonight? Are we, and the requ, I thought the request was gonna be to, to go further, and he informed me that, that this action is no longer needed. So, and, and, and the bylaw, we actually.
So, that, I guess that's my point.
Yeah.
Is if, if the information that was put in here was to tell us that it was no, not longer needed today, it's different than what, so why was it put on last Thursday?
Well, it was put on because I want, I wanted to, to, I, I was, I'm assuming it was gonna be handled tonight, you know, for.
But was there new information that they were gonna, who was coming in to us tonight to talk about it?
You, you didn't wanna take any action the last meeting, on this issue, right? So you, 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 you had it, so you wanted to have it up on the agenda again.
But with no new information, it was just a further discussion?
Well, you, you wanted to take further time to think about it and review things. So I, I didn't know if there was anything else, and then when I talked to John, was there anything new to report on this, is, you know, I, I, you know, I talked to John, he said, there's no, there's no, uh, there's no basis for it, because there's no town meeting actually required.
All right, so if this just came up this afternoon?
Yes.
So that's.
Yeah.
So you're, you're convinced, just from the discussion you had this afternoon, that it's gonna be taken off of everything, and that's the way to.
Right.
To proceed, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the language in the bylaw.
Yep.
Not that I don't believe you.
No, it's, it's fine, no, it's, it's a fair request, I don't have any problem.
I think we should put our.
Yeah, and as a representative from the selectmen, I'd like to see, see it too, so.
Sure.
I can bring it to the meetings.
I might as well segue into, uh, special town meeting warrant.
All right, so, um, the, only, the other article was, um, was that article, and what was the other one?
The land transfer for the fire department.
Land transfer for the fire department, there, there was, um, there's been, there was, there was a fair amount of discussion about the, at the AdCom, about, about this land transfer, as, as there was at the board. And so we, we, we reached out to, um, to Representative Barrows to make sure that we're, you know, that there was no concerns about the, about the transfer itself, and that the language was appropriate, and, and there was concern about the fact that there was provision in the language that said, based in, in that, you know, some money would be transferred or appropriated for this. The language was the same that was used to acquire the, the land, for the, for the Housing Authority to, to go, for the land to go to the Housing Authority, which didn't result in any appropriation. So we were not asking for an appropriation for this land, we were just asking for the ability to petition the legislature to give us the land. So that's, that's an important point to remember, because everybody's at, looking, where's the appro, you know, it says appropriation, but we're not asking for an appropriation. However, uh, we have to, this was, this whole transfer process was, was started through Senator Timolty's office, in, in talking with the fire department, you know, a couple of years ago, and then they decided eventually they would pull, bring it forward. Senator, Senator Timolty, as you know, was gone, but unfortunately, some of the records that went along with this discussion have somewhat, have disappeared. So we can't seem to track them down. So the land itself is actually under the guise, it's, it's in D Cam's hands, but it's, it's also under the control of the Department of Agriculture. So in order for it to get to D Cam's hands, so they can actually disperse the land, there has to be a release from D, from the Department of Agriculture, which I'm told was actually in the, the records of Senator Timolty's, uh, staff. But we're gonna, but we don't have it, and I'm not comfortable going forward until we have all the full package. So I talked with the fire department today, informed them, I said, I think we, we should just wait on this one, and, and make sure we have a full package to present at town meeting in the spring, and then we can go forward at that point, and make sure that we have all the right, correct language about it, and everything's, everybody's comfortable with the language. So, um, I recommended that we, that we postpone it at this point, and they, they were fine with that.
So AdCom's only concern was over the perceived monetary part of what was in there?
Well, I, they, I, I don't know if there was, I wasn't there for all of the discussion, perhaps Randy can weigh in on that, but, or Jenny.
I was, if you see section two of Article 13, it says, "The consideration for the parcel shall be the full and fair market value of the parcel for the use authorized by this act." The, the fire department presented that, um, this, this land was gonna be free and clear, the state wasn't gonna charge us anything. So the advisory committee said, well, wait a minute, then that should be reflected in this legislation, and that was the genesis of, of checking with, um, Senator Timolty's office. I called Jay Barrow's office. His office really wasn't aware of it, because the fire department had been working with Senator Timolty's office.
Correct.
So now Jay's gone and looked into it, and it's been going back and forth, and then, this, this article's not ready to be voted on.
That's right.
To be looked at, to be looked at by AdCom or us, or to be voted on at town meeting. There, there needs to be more work done in this article. So that's why it really should be pulled.
That was, and it was, and it came down because of the fact that there was a transition of office, unfortunately, and, um, and Sen, Senator Feeney's just not up on it, because he, he had, he had never dealt with it, so. In fairness to him, and in fairness to Representative Barrows, who, who was trying to help us to get resolve, get it resolved, I, I said, look, I think, what's not, there's no rush here on this one.
Yeah, the transfer of land is a very long process.
Right.
Um, I know the fire department wanted to, to start as soon as they can, but delaying this for the annual town meeting is not gonna really make that much difference.
It's not gonna, yeah, it's, it's not gonna, it's not a huge difference in time.
Because you're not get, you're not gonna file on Monday and get it on Wednesday. It's not gonna happen. It's gonna be years, so.
Other than that, um.
And also, and, and also, if we delay it, you gotta remember, by that time.
More information on it, too.
The Route 140 study will have come out.
Correct.
And we'll have a better handle on, on, on the whole situation.
Correct.
So I think it's actually better that, that this be pulled.
Yeah, you mentioned that to me, that, that's a, that's a very good point.
Well, because of, because of the traffic on 140, and, and the location of that light, they're gonna need an emergency stop signal to get out of the fire station.
Right.
On top of, on top of that light.
Correct.
So there's a lot more work that has to be done, not only on the article, but also the whole thing, the whole project.
It's a moving process.
That's right. It's a slow-moving process.
Who's this?
Okay, all right.
And then, that's all I, that's all I had, it was, so, so those two articles would be effectively removed.
And I see Article 16 postponed?
Yeah, so in summary, now you have thirteen articles remaining. The spreadsheet that you have tells you, you know, which AdCom has, they've all come, the ones that have come before you have been voted on by AdCom. The one that you heard tonight with Lieutenant Noonan will go to AdCom tomorrow night. The AdCom had a question on Articles 10 and 14, so town council is gonna return to AdCom tomorrow night. Article 10 is that Stormwater Lean article, uh, there was some language, uh, that, they wanted a little more explanation on that, and Article 14, the Marijuana Code, Chapter 162, was something else that they wanted to, um, to hear about. So those two are going before, those three are going for AdCom tomorrow night. We're scheduled to go for, on November 8th, for the, any contracts that we get agreement on. Those are Articles 3 and 4, so, essentially, not speaking for AdCom, but I think we're in pretty good shape with presenting here, and presenting to them, and their voting. I, they did a lot of voting last week, and they had a few more questions. They had some questions on the land transfer article, and had requested maps, et cetera, so now there'll be a little more time to get the information together on that. So it will be presented to you for signature with these thirteen articles.
And then removing Article 8, if we find out that it does require Board of Selectmen approval and town meeting approval, it'll just have to wait until the.
It'll go to the spring, yep.
Right. And we'll sign that, that's in our.
Mm-hmm.
packets of sign. Okay. Any other questions regarding the warrant articles? Selectmen's update, obviously, today's Halloween, we all dressed up as selectmen today, thank you, everybody, for, for doing a great job with their costumes.
You and Chris got the, got the right costume color, correct? Same shirts?
I hope the kids had a, a good evening tonight. I just wanna mention, um, Fireman's Ball last Friday night was, um, was very well attended, it was a lot of fun, it had over 275 people. Corey Shepherdson and John Triondi III did a terrific job putting that together. Everybody had a, had a really good time, so, congratulations, guys, it was a, it was a fun event. That's all I have, anybody have anything else you wanna add?
What about those turkeys? Nothing in the newspaper this week.
Anything for turkeys?
It was supposed to be in the newspaper.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, um, now he apologized, it's gonna be in next week, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a small, people, then you, you've done it just about, I think, every year. If you wanted to send a, a check, it'll be in the paper Thursday, there's a P O box and a thing, just quietly put it together, and a lot of families and kids pass them out. So if you're inclined to, that'd be appreciated.
Bill?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just wanna say, um, that it's great to be in this new facility, um, it's just, um, I, I'm just pleased that it finally came together, and it's, this is a culmination of a lot of folks putting a lot of work into this process, and I'm very, very grateful and, and honored to be able to have served with everybody, uh, including this board, to make this dream come true, so. We will be doing a formal ribbon cutting of the building on November 14th. We were actually working on the invitations tonight. If anybody on the board has specific members or individuals we think we should invite, please let me know, you have to do it tonight, of course, but think about it, and let, get to us, because we're gonna get the invitations out this week. It'll be at five o'clock here at, at Town Hall, um, we'll have a few guest speakers, and, um, and we will, um, cut the ribbon, and then from five to seven, we'll do some tours, and maybe have some light refreshments, and then by seven, well, at seven o'clock, we'll, we'll convene the, the board's regular meeting. So it's, um, the, the parking lot was completed last week, um, obviously, the, the rain certainly helped to, to keep it, to cure it a little bit. We got, we started to get three inches of rain in the process, but we got quite a bit of it. They, they planned to stripe it on Friday, um, so we'll have an even better indication of how the parking works out, but it's gonna have been a better week to have the parking, because this was tax week, and a lot of people were using it, and, um, we see that a lot of our neighbors are starting to use it as well, so that's getting a lot, getting a lot of use right now, so we're really pleased to be able to pay it back, or pay it, pay it back from, from the folks that let us use some of their spaces during the construction phase. So far, everything's working as planned, we're still, we're still, we're working on some interior decorating pieces with, with some, um, some pictures that we're trying to finalize, and hopefully have up before the, before the, the ribbon cutting, if not, we'll be shortly thereafter. Uh, we're having a, a wood carving done by a veteran, who is a wood carving expert here in town, and he's doing a terrific job of carving a piece that will go right above, right behind the, the chairman's seat. Uh, that'll be a, a town of Foxborough seal, that's being hand carved, it's, it's really being, doing a terrific job.
We're gonna get a clock so he can stay on time?
Yeah. Completely threw me off today. Has to have a second hand, too.
And last, and last, I wanted to report that, um, I do, I do really wanna emphasize the thanks that I wanna provide, I, 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 offer to all the folks that worked during the storm, it was a really difficult situation, I, a lot of people came together, and I really appreciate all the help. I did wanna just let the board know, I did, I did attend the ICMA National Con, International Convention in San Antonio last week. It was the largest attendance in the history of the organization, over 4,000 managers from around the world, uh, and their, and their, and their guests, I didn't, you know, I was there by myself, but a lot of, a lot of my colleagues from Massachusetts came, there was about a hundred of us from Massachusetts represented there, so we had a really good, really good response from the state. It was an excellent conference, um, it was, uh, it was busy, but it was, it was a very, very hectic, hectic, but very informative con, um, convention, or conference, rather, where we spoke from everything, from technology to, to, um, to dealing with police and civil discourse, civil, civil issues, dealing with police and da, um, the dangers of police work nowadays, how difficult it is to recruit, uh, police officers in this environment, how difficult it is to just get people to work in public safety in general. We also talked about ways in which we can do better jobs of attracting and expanding our economic development efforts. I will say, though, that Massachusetts is considered to be one of the top states in the country for attracting, um, people wanna come to Boston. It's one of the, one of the number one places, locations in the country, for attracting new talent, particularly millennials. So I was pleased, I was pleased to hear that. I talked, I, I, I'm a member of the Government Policy Committee for ICMA, so we talk about national issues, and one of the things I, I spoke about is that, you know, we need to spend more focus and, and spend more time focusing on, on, on rail systems as opposed to highway systems, because we're getting people around on our highways, so we're just expanding them, that's always putting more cars on the road, and that's not getting people from point A to point B, as we can see. So we need to look at newer and better ways to expand, ways we can get people around, and, um, and that was really well received, actually. The other thing that we spoke about was the thing that we've been working with, the police chief and, um, a, a committee that we're working on in the state, was, was dealing with, um, uh, so, the, um, these, what's it, civil liberties issue, and, and the police, and how we can better, do a better job of that, and work with, with the police departments to, to reach out more on the local level, to, to develop that relationship with, with people from all walks of life, and, um, that, that drew a lot of attention, and we had a lot of talk, conversation about that particular issue. So all in all, it was a very, very informative week, um, I can tell you that, um, I was very pleased to be able to represent this community there, because we're doing a lot of things in Ma, in Foxborough that, that people from around the country are somewhat envious of. And, um, the fact that we're able to conduct business in a, in a great facility, and, and to have a great staff, and people that really care about what they do is, is really important, and and I was, I was able, able to really share that with people, and they really appreciated it. So thank you, that's all I have for today.
I just have a couple of updates, um, if the board recalls, they, you approved and adopted a workplace violence policy for us back in June, and now we've begun training all of our employees on it. A lot of times when a town adopts a policy. A lot of times when a town adopts a policy, we just hand it out, ask everyone to read it and sign it. But this was a really important issue of workplace violence. So our police chief, Bill Baker, and our attorney, Jack Dolan, have partnered to create a training program for our employees. And we presented two sessions last week that were fully attended in this room, which was really, really nice. Tomorrow, we have two more sessions. We're making it mandatory for all employees to take the training and then sign the policy. Cable is kind enough tomorrow to film one of the sessions so that our people who work on shift work, police and fire, will be able to view it during, at their convenience and also be able to take the training. We also completed two sessions of darkness-to-light training for all the new, the people we've hired in the last year. Deb Giardino, our recreation director, trained two groups last week on that. I know that there's a new training coming out, like a refresher for people, but we wanted to get everybody at least baseline trained on darkness-to-light. So that's complete. Tomorrow, our SEMREC director, our Southeastern Mass Regional Emergency Communications Director, begins officially November 1st. We are, he's going to be housed here in the Flex Office, which is on the first floor. We are in the process, the SEMREC is meeting next week. They've appointed a treasurer to start setting up the accounts to accept the grant money, the state 911 grant money. And they're all, they're in the process of doing that, getting a tax ID number and working out the accounting for that. We're really excited to get him started. He's got lots of ideas on seeking further grants and matters of policy and getting around to all the departments to get to know their operations.
He's a very talented guy.
Yeah. So we hope to bring him to a future meeting so that you can meet him. And then finally, we'll be getting Personnel Board back together in November for a meeting because last year, we were really, really successful in getting a lot of policies, you know, adopting the bylaw and then getting social media civility code of conduct policy as well as the workplace violence policies done. This year, we have some, we are looking at the mandatory reporter child sexual abuse policy for employees. And believe it or not, it's going to be, we have to update our corey policy again, which we did in 2015, but it's time to do that one again. So we've now maintained all of our legally required policies and we're in the process of updating and creating new policies. So it is just such a great board to work with and they're so productive and happy to say that we'll be bringing you some more, you know, I think our probably fourth batch of policies will be coming to you in the coming months. That's all. Oh, one more thing. One more week for anyone interested in applying for the Building Commissioner position. I know it's really big shoes to fill. That closes on November 6th and we're looking for qualified candidates for that position.
Are you getting a lot of applicants?
We probably have about 16 applicants for it.
Which is thin compared to...
Compared to, you know, our executive assistant, we have 165. So, and administrative assistant at the fire department had 211. So, you know, the more specialized a position is, the harder it is to attract qualified candidates.
That was something I learned as well, is that the specialty positions are becoming extraordinarily difficult to recruit for all across the country. It's not just limited to Massachusetts.
Bill, I just have a question for you. You were talking about the decor for the town hall. Are you going to put up a picture or depiction of Charles Fox, Charles James Fox, who, the Town of Fox was actually named after him?
Love to. Do we have one?
Well, there's, I know when Jack Othless books, there is a drawing of him. But I think it's really important that we have his picture in this town hall.
I think it's great.
Because we weren't named after an animal.
We could, we should actually put it right here in this room.
Yeah, and the story is very important because he was a member of parliament and he actually was for the American cause for the Declaration of Independence and he took a lot of flak for it in England. But in honor of him, that's why the town voted to call themselves Foxborough. It's a really interesting story and Jack can really, he's written about it, so...
Yeah, I'd love to be able to get a picture, that'd be great.
Yeah. He probably hasn't.
Action items?
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $140 to Animal Control from Frank Goodman.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $125 to the Council on Aging in Memory of Nancy Williams from Anonymous.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $18 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Charles and Jean Albert.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $40 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Patricia and Eric Stevens.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $500 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Aridi Construction Company.
Mean airtight?
Airtight.
Oh, yeah, that was left, too.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $1,000 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Glenn Mott.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $65 to the Council on Aging in Memory of Nancy Williams.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $10,100 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the Foxborough Knights of Columbus and the Partners in Patriotism Fund.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Other than the fact that, thank you.
Other discussion, I believe we are incredibly close to getting the required funding with that generous donation and the others that we approved tonight, but not quite there yet, but just about.
Pretty close.
Excellent. All is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $765 to the Council on Aging for payments toward two presentations by Gary Highlander and a payment for half of September Tai Chi classes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. We'll do these individually. Move to approve the 4417 Board of Selectmen minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. And move to approve the 101717 Board of Selectmen minutes.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to Caitlin for keeping us up to date.
Yeah, you surprised us.
So that concludes our first night in our new digs. I think everything went off without a hitch, other than the fact that we were late.
Getting here.
Hey, before we close, one last thing. We're $9,000 short.
$9,000 short.
So time to write the check, Philman.
Well, I'm good for something, but not nine grand.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
You have things to say?